Welcome everyone to the October 2nd, 2012 City Council Meeting. Let's rise with base of applause.
Our question is that we provide the United States of America in a new republic which is changed, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very beginning of all.
We'd like to acknowledge the fact that we have a list of this evening. Ms. Nancy Bobby, Senator Johnny Isaacson's staff. She's been meeting with the public here in panel this afternoon. Drop by the City Council meeting as soon as I can. With the clerk reading the minutes of the City Council meeting on September 4th.
Mayor Governor of the State and members of the office, we ask all council members to sit down. Members present, Mr. Valeria Bowman, Ms. Josephine Chapman, and Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman. Mayor Governor, we wish you the reading of the August 7th, 2012 Council meeting. After the reading, he has motioned for the meeting to adjourn. Ms. Chapman made her motion for the meeting to adjourn, and is seconded by Ms. Butler. The mayor asked by the board to adjourn by Saturday afternoon. All are reading the motion here. The next item on the agenda is public request. When asked by the mayor of the county, there was no response from the county. Moving on to the mayor's report, he stated that a man in serial police on Commerce Street was washed here. The first of this past Friday, our contractor came in and exposed a line and found a hole in two patches, then replaced the dirt. The next day, the system knocked on the window of the mayor's office, says Nancy Mary immediately was a lead on Commerce Street. The mayor stated he went to Commerce Street and there was a leak in the same spot as the day before. It was the next week before he was able to give the contract to somebody. The contractor dug up the same pad pipe, and just a few meters from the first patch, there was another hole. After they were tearing down, before it could be covered, he started leaving again. At this point, it was decided that the whole pipe had to be replaced. The line comes all the way across Commerce Street. The main is on the south side of the street, and the water cherry is on the north side. After checking, they located a cut-off path for that line. The line is now cut off, and the line is setting back at what it needs. There is no hurry to repair the line, but before the street gets repaired, we will have to replace the line with plastic pipe and liquidate the waterline to the meter that serves the wash period. The city had an estimate for Johnny Harris was weeding along Broad Street, and the rock was falling into the window in the county bus. The window broken was on the emergency exit door, when it was the most expensive place to repair, and also very difficult to find someone to do the repair. The insurance company tried to hide the value of the city hall on 410,000 to 476,000. They also want to raise the value of historical society grid building of 100,000 to 184,000. The mayor said he requested adoption to lose for a different source. He has come back with a proposal that she has authorized the board to read, and it will cut about 300,000 to 3,000,000 off our annual insurance bill with a company he considers to stand cutting. Next third, several other municipalities. Mayor Governor stated the plan to take the mortgage rate for the current fiscal year. He asked council members to look at the proposal when they're buying, and asked them to consider adopting the rollback mortgage rate of 16.75%. Last year, it was 16.95%. The proposed we have on September 25th, because we meet on September 25th, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. to hold a public hearing, and then adopt the mortgage rate. The mayor informed the council member of a letter from CSR Evolution Commission stating it was new guidelines for cities and counties to implement this coming year. To inform council and planning commission, they have called a meeting at City Hall this Friday at 2:00. He has particularly fitted their schedule to attend the meeting. Mayor Governor stated they were reporting the file that showed the number of visitors that were stopped in the month of August. There was 192 unique visitors. Makes down the agenda was reported. Mayor Governor stated planning commission can be against mission with chairman of the board report from the planning commission. Mission stated not for this month. There would be an October. Mayor Governor information that until the planning commission reports, the council cannot act upon.
Do you want more? Yes, read that.
Yeah, it is. Has nothing to act upon. Mayor Governor, we don't find 24. Explain the balance sheet for the general fund. Shows what's on the deposit in the various accounts. Most accounts have under run the budget in the last expenses through the last seven months have under run by $2,700. There is still the concern that our new mortgage rates are input to me that need the operating system. Other state and city did not do financial admission till the end of July 2012. There was not any other business to discuss in American Indian to New Business. Mayor Governor stated that makes the agenda is an amendment to the general fund's budget, which position did to agree with the mortgage rate as proposed on the budget that was shown earlier. And we will advertise later this month, the mayor requests that a motion to adopt Resolution 2012-004 to amend the 2012 budget. Mr. Chapman made a motion to adopt Resolution 2012-004, and was seconded by Ms. Chapman. When filed by current, all agreed, and the motion carries. Mayor Governor stated there was no further business to discuss on the agenda. Nancy and council members said even if more, they wished to speak up. At this point, Mr. Stewart asked to speak. He stated they had managed to have a family to a meeting, but they couldn't have the meaning to receive counsel. He is unaware as to party council that might have the minutes to the meeting. The mayor pointed out, party council does not have the minutes to the meeting. The mayor pointed out they had their meeting at 5:30 on Friday evening, when it was a holiday, and usually was a day getting ready for council meeting. Mr. Stewart said they could have had a meeting before Friday. Mayor Governor told him they could because of the law, and it was published in the paper, and early, and it possibly could be after the ordinance was introduced. The mayor asked for motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Chapman made the motion to adjourn, and was seconded by Ms. Butler. The mayor adjourned the meeting.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? But I have a motion to approve the minutes as read.
I motion to approve the minutes as read.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Ms. Chapman, seconded by Ms. Butler. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like a fan. Minutes are approved. Clerk reading the minutes of the special council meeting of September 25th.
Mayor Governor of the special meeting, and members of council members, the mayor of the office stated no reason for the special meeting was to adopt 2012 mortgage rate. He asked all the standing players to apply. Members present, Ms. Beckett Stewart, Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, and Ms. Valeria Bowman. He explained to the members they had before them information, so this in the advocate Democrats showed they proposed mortgage rate in the history of the tax form, period from 2007 through 2011. The mortgage rate is the rollback that does not require any special meeting. Explaining further, he stated that in the last council meeting, council members had adopted a budget which required taxes at the level that mortgage rate produces. He recommends that council set the 2012 mortgage rate at 16.75. He asked for motion. Ms. Stewart made a motion to set the 2012 mortgage rate at 16.75, and was seconded by Ms. Butler. He asked council if there was any discussion on the motion. When filed by clerk, all members answered yes, but adopt the 2012 mortgage rate at 16.75, and the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Governor stated this completes the meeting agenda, and adjourned the meeting.
Any corrections or additions? I have a motion to approve the minutes as read.
How much would that be approved against this, Larry?
As I say.
I said it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like a fan. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, public request. Ms. Jones.
Mary Jones, I live at 198 Broad Street. I'm also president of the Public Health Society. The zoning commission meeting that happened in September, despite being scheduled 5:30 on a Friday afternoon for a three-day weekend, we had 24 people there. Every person that spoke spoke in support of the community society ordinance, not once a person spoke against the human society ordinance. And several people also spoke, including two members of the zoning commission, requesting that the county ordinance be changed. We have been debating this issue for six months. You all have been here at meetings, but we had as many as 60 people in this room, all in support of the human society. I think that's probably the most we've ever had at meetings, other than the real electoral issue, and we just had huge support. We have 149 mayors on petition to ask a vote, the county ordinance be changed, and the human society be supported. Again, we only have about 300 or 400 people in this county vote. About half of them don't care when they're the other half, and they don't care if the ordinance is there or not. People that do care, care very strongly about changing county ordinance and supporting the human society. I'm not sure why this has dragged out for six months. I'm not sure, we have this many people, this unanimous about what they want. I'm not sure why this vote hasn't already been taken. But I would urge the City Council to make a motion to approve the human society ordinance, make a motion to delete the county ordinance, and adopt these things so that we can move on to everything. We've been fighting about this for six months, that's quite normal now. I think that ordinance should reflect the community standard. The community gets very clearly stated where it wants, and I would be happy to help this standard. Thank you.
One more. Next item on the agenda, last report. When we received the approval from EPA to grant funds for rehabilitation of our sewer lines, we were required to have matching funds. According to the published guidelines, we had to have a 45% match. However, when they sent documentation down on the approval, it indicated that they were claiming the entire $500,000 that we had obtained in a community development block grant as matching funds for the grant that they were awarding. This would mean that we would have to spend the entire community development block grant to get all of the EPA grant. And good management of the community development block grant project might be sacrificed during an effort to spend all the money to get the other money. So, I protested to Congressman John Barrow's office, and eventually I had opportunity to protest to him personally, and his staff became involved with me in an effort to get this change. I took my concerns to Mrs. Bobby, Senator Isaacson's office, and she got a member of his staff to get in touch with me, and she made some suggestions which I tried to implement. And last week, we got word that somebody had gotten through to the EPA, and they now consider that we only have to have a 45% match in order to draw all of the EPA funds. So, this is a concern that's been on my mind for several months, and I'm glad that I have said this is a parrot thing that results in our favor. The, we are required by agreement with our bond holders to adopt a budget for 2013, not too much before the end of this year. So, we will have a proposed 2013 budget on the next agenda. But in order to adopt the budget at that time, we have to hold a public hearing at least one week ahead of the meeting, no longer on. I plan to call a meeting at 7:00 p.m. on October 23rd, which is Tuesday, and it actually is two weeks before our meeting. But if I can get the ad in the paper so that it comes out at least one week before that meeting, then this will... Public hearing on the budget will be then on October 23rd, and budget will be on our agenda for adoption. November 6th, collection done. Moving on to reports. Planning Commission report is on.
Here's a copy of the amendments at the points that we're looking at tonight. Tell me if you're refreshing memory. A special call meeting on the planning commission was met August 31st, not September. I don't know what meeting Ms. Jones was at. This was on ordinance amendment 2012-08-1, with all board members present, Mr. Larry Stewart, Mr. Dorsey Cooper, and myself, Cheryl Young. After public request, the board approved 2 to 1 in favor of approval with changes, with Mr. Stewart and Mr. Cooper in favor, and Cheryl Young against. And the changes are in your pamphlet, in your folder that look like this, they're written changes. Want to turn it out? One page, Mr. Cooper has given, and Mr. Stewart has the other page. The changes were, from Mr. Stewart, is to eliminate section 7.2, especially exception. If you look at your copy. All right, Mr. Cooper stated under city zoning ordinance that the definition of a county is wrong and should be changed to a state ordinance. We're 2 to 1 in favor for changes, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Cooper, and Cheryl Young against the changes. I also have here a copy of the rules from the State Department that shows you what the state calls the county animal shelter foster homes. Please, let's take state homework tonight. On page 2, shows you what the definition of animal shelter and foster home that she has, several, and the county, which there is a difference there. On page 5, that they are submitted to inspection of the animal foster homes are as well as she is. Just a state regulation there. That instance includes animal shelter foster homes that she has. She's allowed up to 20 pets, and that includes all of her, not only her, but her foster homes as well. She does have a violation this year, not renewing her license, that was $100 that came out of her pocket. So, now, that's right from paper that she did not have any violations, but she does. Any questions from the board? Please, state homework, and that is what is required, and we're several in place of doing a pileup, and if you can just look it up.
The recommendation to delete, um...
Section 7.2.
7.2. Let's see, that would delete the requirement to be licensed, or to comply with local, state, or federal laws. They used to have things that operated like that, the cold steaks. Thank you for your report. Well, let's fulfill that. Audience has put on the agenda. This is your file. You can receive and file until... I take a motion to receive and file the report of the planning commission.
Okay, I make a motion.
Is there a second? Motion will be followed and seconded by Ms. Chapman to receive and file the planning commission report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like a fan. Motion here. Next agenda items, just the financial report. You have for you the revenue expense budget for the general fund through the month of August. Total income exceeded the budget, $402,000, honestly, that's a lot. The total expenses thus far have under run $10,400. Across the board, everything looks very good. The breakdown, the general government operations expenses, the total actual expenses have slightly overrun the budget by $626,000. Judicial expenses have under run. Public safety expenditures have under run. Public works expenditures have under run by almost $9,000. Cultural recreation expenses have under run by $203,000. On the balance sheet, we've still got funds in the bank, and should be amped up to meet operating costs. This month, we should get checked on the insurance commission of the insurance taxes that they collect and relate to the city. Next is the revenue and expenses for the water and sewer fund. Total income, revenues have under run the budget by about $7,000. Total expenses have under run by $500. But from a actual expenditure, an any kind basis, on net ordinary income, or net income is bottom line, we are about probably... Revenues have under run our expenses by about $1,900. Solid waste collection, revenues have under run by $1,700. Total expenses have under run by $1,300. Actually, we made almost a wash, about $400 more. There's a short pause. The next page indicates the funds that we have on the budget, all those in the various grant funds, of course, are not available for use by the city. They are committed to the projects that they approve. Are there any questions, Mr.? Not on the old business. Next is the, it's new business, resolution 2012-005, a resolution of the City of Prophet Bill, providing for various water and sewer charges. This provides for irradiating process. The cost of operating our water and sewer system are mainly fixed costs. This means that adding and removing a customer has no discernible effect on the operating cost. One of our major fix and... One of our major fixed annual costs is debt service. We pay thirty-four hundred and sixty dollars per year on a water system improvement loan obtained in two thousand and two. Based on arrangements made during the Easters administration, we paid twenty-four thousand thirty-six dollars annually on revenue warrants used to finance the sewage treatment. We pay six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars per year on a loan obtained in two thousand and ten to refurbish the water tank. Each of these loans was used to come into compliance with environmental protection laws or rules. Nonetheless, this means our utilities start each year owing over thirty-four hundred, five, excuse me, thirty-four thousand dollars. And that's before the first faucet is opened or the first commode is flushed. We are required by law to have a licensed operator for our water system and our sewer system. We do this through a contractual arrangement that provides laboratory testing and meets licensing requirements. Our cost for this service has been flat several years. We must check the operation of each city well, lift station, and the sewage treatment plant twice a day, seven days a week, and generally, just keep our aged utility working. Our personnel costs have remained flat. Electricity to operate our pumps, lift station, and sewage treatment plant continues to creep up. Everyone knows what has happened to the cost of gasoline. The cost of repairs is unpredictable, but we know breaks will occur and we will have to fix them. After completing our two thousand and eleven audit, the city auditor suggested we consider an increase in utility rates. The holder of the sewer revenue warrants, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, reviewed the audit and suggested that we consider raising our utility rates. The Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, the Lender, on both our other loans, suggested we might be out of compliance with our loan agreement and should consider a rate increase. We have complete information on eight months of operations for the current year, and they show that expenses are greater than revenue projections, by almost two thousand dollars. It appears to me that the loan we obtained to refurbish the water tank is the reason our expenses are greater than our revenues. We knew it was a close call when we borrowed the money, but we tried to hold the line on rates, and we did defer a rate increase for over a year and a half. I have read comments about the magnitude of the delinquent payments owed the city. Currently, these charges are treated as assets of a city which eventually will be collected. And I believe this is the correct way to treat these charges. I have had success in the past working with people and obtaining payments, and I believe that I can continue to do so. If service to these customers is turned off, they may or may not pay up. You could think of the cost of our water and sewer operation as a big pie. The pie is then sliced so that each customer becomes responsible for paying a part of it. When customers are added, each customer benefits from a lower share of the cost. When customers are removed, each remaining customer becomes responsible for a greater share of the cost. My goal is to collect all revenue from all customers and keep as many customers as possible. The rates proposed in our resolution are based on delinquent payments being collected. If these were written off as uncollectible, the proposed rates would have to be higher to cover that shortfall. If this resolution is adopted, most single-person households will not see any change in their bill, and many two-person households won't either. I believe the proposed changes are the minimum required to bring the city into compliance with our bond covenants and our loan agreements. That said, the public hearing on resolution twenty-twelve zero zero five is open. Mr. Cooper?
I'm Dorsey Cooper, and I live at one joint in Park Street Northwest. I'm not for no raise act. It looks like it should be coming down. As of June twenty-twelve this year, there was eighty-nine people that were behind on paying the water, which amounted to over sixteen thousand dollars. Now, that is just bummed disgusting. There's four people that work for the city that's behind, and that's just bum shaming. The city folks are supposed to be setting example for all the other citizens that go by, and they're not doing it, falling down on the job. And obviously, there's two people on that list that makes over fifty thousand dollars a year that's behind on paying their water bill. There's no excuse in that. Now, in January twenty-twelve, y'all councilmembers voted to give the county twenty thousand dollars to buy a truck with you. Early this year, y'all voted to give three thousand dollars for the park. That's twenty-three thousand dollars that should have been left in the city treasury when it wasn't being this mess. Now, I ask that y'all consider a flat rate on the sewage, on account of people watering the flowers, watering the gardens, and washing the cars. That goes through the sewage, that does not go through the sewage system, but it's counted as sewage. And I ask y'all please vote wisely on this and get the people out. Another thing you gotta ask, if y'all raise this rate, where are the people gonna get the extra money out to pay these bills when you got eighty-nine right here that can't pay a man? Thank you for hearing me.
On the public hearing?
I have a question.
Mr. Stewart?
I'm Larry Stewart, one on Lake Monument Street. My question is, on the sheet you have here, where you show, uh, personal service and employee benefits, is that correct? Uh, and then you have the purchase services. What is included? What, what is that personal, should that be personnel?
Personnel.
Uh, is that a full-time job? Or should that...
There is one full-time job and one part-time job.
Just to look after the water?
And the sewage system.
And that...
And they have to circulate every day through each of the pumps, twice a day.
And that's even though we have to purchase from a qualified person or company almost the same amount to take care of the things that we're not licensed to do?
They come about once a week.
There's no way, there's no way the license, the, uh, present employees?
When Royce Richards looked at hiring a licensed employee, and it was more than we were paying for the sum of the two.
Okay, I have another question. How much has been written off this year that does not show on the books?
The only thing that's been written off is shown on the books. Four hundred and down there, it says.
Okay, if that is shown here on the, uh, on the books, uh, that was, that was my question. And my final question is, how do you decide who has to pay the water bill or who gets the water turned off each month?
I look and see who is making payments, and who is making commitments to continue making payments. And, uh, those who attempt to work with the city and make payments to bring their bill down, we keep them in service. And those who just quit making payments, we, uh, block them.
But you do cut some off after missing one payment, is that correct?
I didn't cut anybody off after missing one payment.
Two payments?
It's possible. If they made no commitments whatsoever, if they came in and gave us plenty, we worked Anything else on the public? This public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Council members, you have the four-year resolution two thousand and twelve dash zero zero five. I have a motion to adopt.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution two twelve, two oh, four five.
A motion by Ms. Bowman, if, uh, second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Chapman. Discussion on the motion. Chair Palero, please.
Mr. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman, how do you vote? Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor, how do you vote?
The resolution is adopted unanimously. The rights will be in effect when the next bill is issued at the end of October. That completes the items on the agenda. Does any council member, any finally wish to run it? Do I hear a motion? Motion. The chairman, Mr. Stewart?
Ms. Chapman.
This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. It says on the back of your bill each month that if your bill is not paid within ten days or a few days, it will be cut off and a reconnet you sue will be charged. That should be enough criteria for folks to pay the bill on time and not cut it off. If not, take it off the back of the bill.
Here, here.
If that's still on, if it says ten days on the bill, that is contrary to the, uh, laws on the books. The book says thirty days, so...
Well, it should be taken off the back of the invoice then.
Looking everywhere in this bill.